Should we pass that one? This one?
No cable.
Welcome Karen.
Oh, we got one more.
Yay!
Welcome.
For being late, I got to go on the streetwalk.
I had to take a test.
A test? In what?
We're in class.
Glad you took your time. That's what I tell my kids all the time, "Take your time, don't rush." Alright, well, we'll call a meeting to order. And I think we've got a special presentation. Jamie, are you gonna take it away?
We do, and today we have with us members of the superintendent's forum. So Dr. Maher meets with a group of sixteen students, representation from each of the schools, throughout the first and second semester of each year. Then that group rotates then for the next year after that. So he has a variety of topics that he meets with those students on, once a week. And they have breakfast down there and go through and have discussions on those things. And one of the topics was the district facility needs. And obviously, as a district, as we're going through to try to gain input from our community, part of our community, and obviously, the users of the buildings are our students. And so one of the other areas to be able to gain some insight and background from are students. Now, we obviously have multiple different times and dates upcoming where people can, as a community, including our student population, share some of that input and time. But just to be able to be with us here today and to be able to give us some of that insight, many of these students that come to the superintendent's forum are building leaders as students. And hopefully, eventually, will be community leaders. And as Deanne had said earlier, also to be back in our schools at some point in time as teachers and leaders, or if not, in our community as leaders. So the part that we will go through today is just to be able to allow the board to ask questions. We do have some questions that we'll go and ask, but if you have some follow-up questions you'd like to ask them as well on some of these topics. And Deanne will lead us through most of that. But I'll just start off, and we're gonna have the students be able to go through and introduce themselves, and also just so we have a little bit of a context, be able to just say what elementary, middle school, and high school you went to. Unless it was a private elementary, then we don't wanna know. So Isaiah, we will start with you, Claire, on the end.
So, I'm Isaiah Henderson, and I went to Rosa Parks Elementary School, K through 5th. And then I went to Patrick Henry Middle School, and now I'm a sophomore at Washington.
I'm Tatiana Chance. I went to Oscar Howe and Hayward Elementary. And then I spent my middle school years in Laverne. And then I now go to New Tech High School.
I'm Sinead Dunn, I'm a junior. I went to RF Pedersen and Discovery for elementary school, Memorial Middle School for middle school, and now I'm at Lincoln.
I'm Jaren Mettiger. I went to both John Harris Elementary and Discovery Elementary. For middle school, I went to Memorial, and now I'm at Roosevelt.
Hi, I'm Anne Madsen, and I went to the Challenge Center for elementary school. And then I went to Edison Middle School, and now I'm a senior at Lincoln High School.
Hi, I'm Jane Walsh. I went to Eugene Field Elementary School, and then Woodyer Middle School, and I'm now enrolled at Washington High School.
I'm Joshua Schulter. I went to Madison Elementary School, then I went to Axel Park and George McGovern Middle School, and now I'm at Roosevelt High School.
So we're just gonna kick off here. And we prepared, just so you all know, we prepared a list of questions, presented them to the students a couple of days ago, so they had a chance to think about what they were going to say. We know this time is valuable. We'll spend about thirty minutes going through. We want you to ask questions. So if they say something, you can go ahead and ask, and we'll get you a microphone as they're discussing, so we don't have to come back and try to remember where we were at in that part of the conversation. In terms of facilities, we wanna know what the best thing is about your high school. And with that, what do you wish that every high school had? It could be an experience, it could be an activity, it could be, you know, a fixture in the bathroom. What is the best thing about your high school? And what do you believe we should consider when we're considering schools in the future? What features does a new school need to have, no matter the level? Who wants to kick it off? Sinead, go ahead.
Is pick it up or is it?
Ah, you can leave.
Okay. Well, me personally, since I like play a bunch of sports, I think that like a gym, like just in general, is just like an amazing thing to have. Like, no matter if it's like a band concert or any type of game, if you have like a nice and big gym, it's just good for everybody, I think. Yeah.
Um, at Roosevelt, like we started like my sophomore year, and I'm a junior now, and we started this saying, like the "We are one." And that's probably been my favorite thing that we started. And like, I just think, like, I don't know, not every school needs, like, you don't need a slogan for that, but like, just the aspect of like, "You are one school," and like, supporting each other in events, like, I think every high school and every school should have like that kind of thing.
I know one of the great things that I know a lot of people at WHS love about Washington is that we have a kind of a great diversity level in economic and racial and religious and political. And I think since high school is sort of a test run for how you're gonna participate in your community when you become an adult, I think if we're gonna have a new facility, we need to be able to, that the kids going into it are from different areas of town or from different backgrounds, just because I think that's a very positive thing that, you know, we have at WHS.
I think it's very helpful that Washington has an auditorium, and not just like any old auditorium. It's big, like, we have a pretty big auditorium. It can seat a lot of people, so that's super helpful for whenever we're doing activities for our school, whether it be like a choir concert or something like that, just to have that space to put a lot of people in. And like, even if we're doing like school assemblies or rallies, just our auditorium is just a great place to use.
Having the space at the high schools to be able to hold the various different events that, activities that we have outside of school hours is something that's been really big amongst all the high schools, whether it's band or sports and whatnot.
Kind of, I think having these different buildings, a gym or like a chorus room, a band room, I think it allows kids to kind of explore what they're passionate about and kind of try new things and have the resources to be able to do that.
At New Tech, we do project-based learning, and I like that. We learn in a different way, it's more hands-on. So I feel like we should at least have something where, because everyone has different learning styles, some other type of learning styles be implemented in classrooms.
Anybody else on that particular topic?
As a school district, we're looking at facility plans. One potential is we build more school space, such as a high school, middle school, but more school space. What are your thoughts on that topic?
Okay, well, going to Lincoln and like seeing the space around our school, we don't have much space left to build on, so expanding would have to go to Roosevelt and Washington, which both, they don't have very much space either. So expanding might be difficult, or, I mean, some would probably say impossible, but...
Yeah, that's, I agree with that. Like, if you expand on Roosevelt, you're taking away our parking spot. And I mean, we already struggle with that, so like, I think, and then, again, you can only go up, and we already are on our second level, and going to a third, it's just like, at that point, it's just like, is it worth it? And I, I don't think it is to keep going up.
I would almost say, just like, expanding, you'd kind of be delaying the problem. Because there are so many students, I think the need would almost be towards building a new facility, because you'd almost be taking away from the school, the school itself.
Absolutely.
So my concern on that too as well would be, if we keep getting just bigger schools, we're already the biggest schools in the state, and then are we driving ourselves away from competing and being part of the rest of our state in activities? And then we'd only be looking at Fargo, or Sioux City, or Omaha. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, so just on not being able to compete with other schools?
Well, yeah, you know, having to go outside of our state to participate, would that be a good thing or a bad thing, I guess, in your, your guys' thought process?
I guess, I think it could be both. It kind of does widen our range, and we can be in new places, but also you kind of lose the South Dakota advantage too.
I guess, when I think about, when I think about schools, I think about, like, you guys are talking about having another school being more beneficial, and in my thoughts, I'm thinking, some of you are athletes, some of you are in bands, some of you are in theater, and there's only so many opportunities within your high school to participate. And so by adding more students to those high schools, you're actually reducing the opportunity for those, for students to participate. So by adding another building, you're adding another basketball team, another band, and so you're getting four hundred more, or however many students there are, get to participate in activities that they may otherwise have been either cut from or just not had the opportunity to participate in. And so when I think about, you know, growing bigger and then looking for bigger things to compete against, or do we try to stay kind of where we're at, and we just give more kids the opportunity to explore their passions and to, you know, develop their talents and things like that? So, not really a question, but kind of a comment on the other side of that. And I hear you guys talking about things you're involved in and things that you enjoy, and thinking about trying to get kids into a gym when there's more kids to get into that gym, or that auditorium, or whatever, and that community, I think, gets a little bit diminished as the size grows.
Let me follow with this. Do you think there's a need as students, do you think there's a need for new facilities? Or new buildings or additions?
Or where do you find it most troublesome? Space?
Always, always, definitely, and always.
You have five minutes to go in between classes. Five minutes is enough time, but when you're going, there's, if you have a class in the E Wing at Washington, for example, you have to go to the end of the, say, upper level A Wing. That is, there, five minutes is not enough time, especially with all the kids in the hallways. If there weren't any people, you could, five minutes is enough time, but with everyone in the hallways, just, it's so crowded. And so, it just makes it super problematic getting from one place to another place quickly.
One thing on that is, the hallway space, we're only getting more kids coming into each class, each class, each year, and over time, we're gonna get to a point where we're gonna be building up on space, and we're gonna have to find some way to even out where everybody's going. 'Cause then it will reduce the problems that we're, we will be having in the future.
There's an, like, at the, at Roosevelt, like you asked, like, so the hallways are a big deal, yeah. But then, like, our gym, like, we used to be able to fit every single, like, student in our gym to have a pep rally. And like, this year, we weren't supposed to have a homecoming pep rally because there's too many of us. And like, that kind of stinks, like, that's like a big part of homecoming. So everybody was really bummed out, and they found a way to make it work, but like, at the same time, we were all really sad the whole week. But, so I think the gym is another thing, and if we had less students, then we'd have more space in our gym.
As you were introducing yourselves, I heard somebody went to Eugene Field, and somebody went to Rosa Parks, New Tech High, and some of the specialty schools that we have. If you got to just dream about additional specialty schools, other than all city and the things that I've mentioned, are there other specialized schools that you could think of, either elementary, middle, or high school, that if you got to dream, you thought might be good ideas for us to look at as we move forward with this?
And so I went to Eugene Field, which is the arts-oriented, and it was a really great experience, and I, I love Eugene Field. But I think if we add any more specialized school, it's gonna take away the certain parts of a, a general education school that are so important. I loved Eugene Field, it was amazing, but I got to Woodyer Middle School, and it was just sort of a, "Oh, this is what life is like," and it was amazing. And that's why I loved Woodyer so much, is because it was big, and it was loud, and it was real. And I think if, if we're gonna try to specialize more, it's just gonna, we're gonna lose other areas that you're gonna get in a general high school.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Thanks.
We can't build a building tomorrow, so what do we do until, if we are able to do building, building? What do you all think of split schedules? Like, for example, some kids would come in earlier, maybe seven fifteen in the morning, and then be done at two fifteen or whatever, and then, to alleviate some movement of that, something interesting, what feedback would you think of that?
With the split schedule, I'm just wondering how activities and things like that would work? So if half the people got out at two fifteen, then theater and basketball and things like that, how would that work more? I don't think that would work very well if there was a split schedule.
It'd help you getting to different school activities. But then if half the people are still in school during practice, it doesn't...
The other thing too, is if you have a split schedule, at some point, everybody's gonna have to be in the building. So like, it will help for some periods, but at the same time, we're all gonna be there at one point.
And how, some of the ways they can do it as lunch would be different, you know? Things could be worked out, but I'm just, until we could get, I'm not, that's not the long-term solution. I'm just thinking, like, because especially Roosevelt is the one I'm thinking of where we're having issue right now.
If we could build a new high school, what would you like to see in the new facility?
I would love to see more diversity within teachers. And I've noticed that at Washington, there's a lot of diversity within the students, but there's not as much diversity within the teachers. I know, Jane, I don't know, is, Donia is literally the only teacher that I can think of that's diverse at Washington, so I would just, I would love to see more of that.
Same here. We have two teachers, Ms. Nelson and Dr. Sherrill. I only ever had Ms. Nelson, 'cause Sherrill's an art teacher, and I don't, art, music teacher, I don't get a deal with that, so. More of that, and just, maybe more space too, for like, future, 'cause obviously, Sioux Falls is growing at the rate it's growing right now. Eventually, four schools won't be enough either, so if we make it bigger, we can have more of a cushion for when they do get bigger, we'll have enough room for them for years to come, so.
And in the new school, just, I would say to build bigger hallways, because no matter how big the school is, no matter how much you add on, the hallways are still gonna be the same size. You can't really expand the hallways past what you've already built, so then just be prepared for hallway space.
I don't know if you're aware of the numbers, but how big is two B? How big is a school, is two B a school? Student-wise?
Like, anything over two thousand, 'cause we're at two thousand at Lincoln, and that's a lot right now. I mean, I don't think we're even at two thousand, a little bit under, but I know Roosevelt and Washington are way over, and they're crowded all the time, so two thousand might be like the limit of space for students that we have.
I've been in the hallway in Lincoln when the class has changed, and I was grateful for my weight at that point.
Little heck, I can hear. Yeah, thanks, right when I say weight.
So, thinking back to your time in middle school, I heard, I think we've got a cross, cross-section of all middle schools, but Memorial in particular, and maybe even Woodyer, 'cause we've been talking about those schools specifically. So we already know our high schools are pretty much overcrowded at this point, but think back to your middle school years, what do you think about, do you think we need a new middle school as well? Or for, Josh, I think, you went to Woodyer?
George McGovern.
George McGovern. Sorry, who went to Woodyer? You did, okay, okay. And just thinking, you know, Woodyer is one of our, our oldest middle schools, so just think about that, and if you have a response.
Yeah, about, I know me and Tati both went to Woodyer, and we've, we've heard a little bit of stuff in this group about redoing the building, or assessing the problems with the building, which is, is a real problem, and I, we get that. I would caution that the things that are going on at Woodyer Middle School are phenomenal. We, I went to Eugene Field, it was wonderful, I went to Woodyer, it was like, it was a whole new world. And the things the teachers do there, I don't know if any of you spend a lot of time in any of those schools, but those teachers are parents too, you mean, fifty percent of that school, whether you have parents or not in the home. I, I felt like those teachers were there with anything I needed. And I would caution to, for lack of a better term, mess up the dynamic that's going on there, because it's in that neighborhood where we're very connected with, and we have the mural at the park, we have the art on the utility boxes around. I think that school has something really special going on, that caution not to alter too much.
Only thing about Woodyer that I would say, there are a lot of different levels, that make getting to different classes hard, 'cause I remember getting to band, which is on the bottom basement floor, then getting up to fax was like, a lot of different series of levels and different staircases. I know, like, first getting there in sixth or seventh grade, it was, seemed very huge to me, but as it goes on, it got better, but it was still like, a little bit of a problem level-wise. But I agree with Jane, I love the, the dynamic of the school, it has such a great culture and a strong, positive culture there, and I love it.
Yes, even at Memorial too, with like, distance lives, 'cause I got there, and I was in eighth grade when that new, the start of the new expansion came, for like, the two eighth grade, like, extra, I don't know what they're called, like, teams? Teams, yes, thank you. But even getting from like, the back corner of one team to gym, and, 'cause we had three minutes, was nearly impossible. Like, I had to run, and I don't like to run, so running was kinda a turning point for me, so I was like, no, so.
Another thing with Memorial too, is like, when we were in eighth grade, they added on two teams, which is a lot of students. And my brother is...
Four, like, how many, how many eighth grade teams were there when you were there?
There was three, and then they added two more. But there was, they still kept the three, but it gave, we had two teams that didn't have like a team area.
Yeah.
So it gave those two teams an area to be. But now my brother's an eighth grader, and they have had to add a team onto every grade level there, and maybe one more on the sixth grade, I'm not sure, but that's when, that many more students has already came through, and so there's now three teams that don't have team areas. And so it's just like, within the three years we've been gone, that's our, like, it's already grown, that much of...
And how important is it to them to have that team area?
Well, I just think as like a fifth grader coming in, and you don't have a team area, and you don't know the school, like, I would've been scared. So I think a team area, and it kind of, like, it's like your little safety box there, so it was nice to have.
I was gonna, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I agree with her.
I was gonna ask a little bit more about culture, and that feeling of connectedness in your building. And you, you sort of alluded to that when you're a fifth grader moving into sixth grade, and that feeling, that sense of, "Where do I go?" You know, "Is this my home?" kind of thing. So talk a little bit about the importance of school culture to students. Do you think about the culture of your school? Or is it just one of those far-out things that you hear adults mention, and it doesn't really mean much to you?
Culture's a huge thing to me, personally, 'cause like, even elementary school, you have your one class of thirty, and, 'cause that was me, 'cause that's still pretty big, but that one class of thirty was like your family for the entire year, like, you guys were friends, you'd have sleepovers with people in that class, you didn't really know anybody else besides your classroom. And then you get to middle school, and then you have your team, which is obviously bigger, but yet you still have that a hundred or so kids who are still like all your friends, 'cause you knew all them. And it's just kind of like a smoother transition, 'cause now, I mean, I don't know everybody, obviously, at Lincoln, but I know people in my class, I know probably close to two hundred people. So just that smooth transition of having your friends, with you like all the way up through, and like, having that ability to see your friends, like, in that team area, is just like a huge part of, like, probably even development, like, just to have that rock almost to know where you're going.
Definitely. Um, I know New Tech has a really great culture, because we're a smaller school, we're with the same people, like, we have block schedules, so then half the group is with the teachers at some certain point. But you're, you're with the same fifty people all day, and you get so close with them, and you're doing group work all the time, so you really get to know them. And being comfortable with your group members, being comfortable with your schoolmates, it makes learning easier, and you're more comfortable asking questions to them, 'cause it's easier to ask your friend questions than asking the teacher. So if you don't have that culture of being able to be with your peers, being comfortable with them, then it kind of loses on the educational side.
At some of the middle schools, Georgia McGovern in particular, that, in the last few years, they've had to make like multiple teams to spread out the students, and the students don't all get to see everybody in their class outside of that team, 'cause they meet up in their groups on, particularly, in different days, and they don't get to really meet with everybody. And this is a brand-new school, and they don't have all the space for everybody that's there to get to congregate, I guess.
Tatiana, I'm gonna put you on the spot here, as a New Tech, so the rest can relax. What would be the pros and cons of having New Tech as part of a new building, a new high school, but being a part of that new high school?
I think for a pro would definitely be activities. I do theater at Washington with Jane and Isaiah. And being able to be at the big school with New Tech as like a wing or something, that could help me get to different activities and be easier that way. But as a con, I've been talking to a little, a lot of people, and then, a lot of what helps New Tech be New Tech is the smaller culture that we have, and we're able to know other people. And I think that in Sioux Falls, with a city as big as we are, some people, they don't wanna be in that big place, so having New Tech as a smaller school can allow those people who don't wanna be in a big overcrowded place like Lincoln, or Roosevelt, Washington, to be able to be smaller school and more connected, 'cause some people thrive off of that, I think.
Thank you.
We're gonna go back to that culture, you continue to, to mention that. Can the design of a building help promote a positive culture? And if so, how? I'm not saying you have to use architectural, like, words or anything, but how, how can that help? You talked a little bit about team areas in the middle schools, auditoriums. So maybe we feel like we've covered that.
Um, it's just, wait, sorry. Um, I think auditorium's a great, like, New Tech, we're small enough, we can meet in a lunchroom, but that's a time when the whole school is together. So if you have a place where, like, the lunchroom, auditorium, where everyone can be there and they're together, so we have pep rallies in lunchroom, but I know, like, other places, sometimes we stay on the STI side, and then it's kind of a place where we can kind of hang out and lounge a little bit. Not saying that people should lounge during school, but someplace they can like, hang out, have a little bit of fun, talk with their friends, do homework, study, I think that helps a lot.
I'm gonna be honest, I don't think the architecture and design of a building is gonna impact the culture of what we've been saying that much. I think it's the people in the building, and it's the teachers in the building. Sometimes if we're focusing on how crowded the hallways are, and how wide they are, I think we're losing some of the more important issues. I think overcrowding is a problem, I agree with that, but it's three minutes during the day. I think we can, we can survive for a little bit, it's a little overcrowded.
Yeah, I agree with Jane, like, you, give us a school, and we're gonna make like a school out of it, like, we're gonna be a family. And like, I don't know, I give credit to Mr. Hazlitt, like, he took that "We are one" slogan, and it's on the announcements every day, he comes on, gives speeches about it. Like, you can see how passionate he is about it, and when you see like your head principal be passionate about something, like, it lights a fire under the students, and we're like, we wanna do it for him. And like, the way you make a building, that's not gonna take that away from the student body.
There are districts around us that offer different formats for learning, so it could be online, or, you know, you go part of the day, or you do other things outside of class. And I'm curious what you guys think about, as you talk about seeing your peers throughout the day, and how important your teachers are, what's your impression of how some piece of it being an online, maybe alleviating students from having to be in a building, and giving them time to be at home and learn? How do you guys feel about that?
I think, oh, sorry. I think that it may work for some students, but for the majority of kids, I think that it's really important to be in the traditional classroom, just the interaction you get with your peers and with your teachers. I just think that the inspiration... Just the interaction you get with your peers and with your teachers. I just think that the inspiration and the encouragement that you can get from teachers and from your peers is something that would be very, very difficult to find from a computer or something. And so I think although it may work for some students, I think for the majority of students, the traditional classroom is really important, that environment.
Yeah, I, going off of what you said, um, I think, yeah, going, um, learning from like a computer or something, that definitely takes away the community aspect of being in a classroom. And even if like, if you like hands-on learning and that's more easy for you to learn something like that, you can't really get that from a computer as much, as well as you could from being in a physical classroom. I do think it would be a good idea if, say you were sick and you had to miss school, maybe you could catch up what you were doing, um, catch up on what the class was doing that day on your computer at home. We kind of already do that, um, in some of my classes. So I don't know how much further you could take it, but yeah.
I think.
You go ahead.
Okay.
Kinda going off what they both said, like when you're doing a project online by yourself and you're stuck, you have no one to help you besides your parents. And your parents, no matter if how you, like long ago they graduated, they might not know what they asked, the teacher asked of you like. But when you are at a school where you have your classmates and you can say, hey, I don't know what to do with this. I'm trying to convey this idea. How can I do it in a better way? Your te, your peers will help you and your teachers will help you to overall get a better grade and a better outcome to overall help your teacher.
Yeah, I think like at school, you learn a lot of the skills you need for your teachers. And like group work, when you, like you're learning how to collaborate with people that you might not necessarily like get along with if you were to hang out. You might not get along with them, but you have to put, put that aside and get through the project together. And I think like in the real work, work world, you're gonna face that every day. And if you didn't, you learned from a computer, you didn't learn how to do that, you might, might not do good at your job. Um, but like Isaiah said, I think an alternative to that is you could like promote online learning more, like always have the option available. Like I didn't even know, like going into high school that you could even do that. And it's not pushed. And I think it should be something that we know is there. Like every class could be, like have it available to be online, but not required.
I agree with all that. New Tech is all group work. Everything that we do is group work. So having a strictly online class would be hard. Not necessarily that way, but like if you wanted to do an online class, I would say to meet in the classroom with that environment like two or three times a week. So you could ask questions when you could, if that's something that we do need to do.
Thank you.
We'll shift gears here and talk specifically about your elementary schools. What should a great elementary school include? If we built a brand new school and you could put something in it, what would that be?
Technical playground? It's important. I have an elementary in kids.
They're very important. Um, I mean, besides that kinda stuff, just maybe like just a more like friendly environment. Because as you like move up in elementary school, it kinda goes from like this happy, like go lucky, like, hey, there's a spot for you guys. I'll sit in a circle. A spot for you guys to take a nap and like play games or whatever, to rows of desks to, and a smartboard and nothing else. That's how my fifth grade teacher was. And so if we kinda had like a more friendly and open environment, like all the way through, not necessarily saying nap time, but like just a time to just like relax, like throughout the day and just a space to be able to do that with all the kids would be important.
But you didn't say we shouldn't have a nap time either.
I mean, yeah, we can if we want. I like that. I mean, like that in high school too.
Others?
I think the main thing about an elementary school, and I don't know how this would manifest itself in the design of a new elementary school, but I think in elementary school, that's where you learn that school is the place you wanna be. No matter how we design it, it needs to be immediately from kindergarten that they wanna go to school. Cause I know now, sometimes getting up in the morning, like, oh, I don't, you don't wanna go to high school or middle school. But there's something there that makes you get up every morning. And I think if we start that immediately in the elementary school, it'll carry on and we're gonna see less dropout rates and better grades throughout their, uh, public education career.
Uh, kinda following that, uh, some of, some of the, when I was in elementary school, I didn't go into Sioux Falls School District. I was in Madison Elementary, uh, here in South Dakota still. Uh, but some, one of the things that I remember most as like a school, we would all, and we had group activities where we could still learn and still kinda congregate and get to know everybody. And it kinda gives you that reason you should, you kinda wanna go to school at like eight, nine years old. And some of the biggest stuff we did, I don't think they do it anymore, but we, we were learning about South Dakota history and legislature and we went to the Capitol. But, um, stuff, stuff like that, even if we aren't able to do that in a big district like this, um, by having those activities available is something that would really help motivate the students.
And I don't think that elementary students are too picky architecturally wise, cause I don't remember what my middle, my elementary looked like. So.
Yeah.
Nothing like outstanding qualities, like don't have to have this big glass chandelier, just somewhere where they feel comfortable at home where it's fun.
Yeah, John Harris, to me still is a maze. Like I don't understand how to get one place from the next, but when I was in elementary school, that didn't matter. Like I think it's like all about the color and stuff, like make it fun to be around.
The colors, nap time, what you're wearing.
Yeah.
Mr. Kreider is happy that there's no chandeliers. Any questions from the board before we have them wrap up with any final statements?
It's kind of like a little question. Uh, how many of you have taken classes at CTE? Have you, so none of you have? Um, how many maybe wanted to and were unable to due to scheduling because of the transportation and timing in class? Two of you. And then how many maybe is, cause the classes that offered weren't of interest to you? So if, whether, if we build a new high school or we add on to high schools, if we brought them back to the schools, would be, it be more opportunity for you to do it?
Yeah, definitely. Cause like if I could have like that lab they have in Health Careers at Lincoln, that'd be so nice for me because me traveling from Lincoln to, like to CTE, then back to my house, to my Roosevelt, and then like all the way around, it's just chaotic and stressful for me. So that's why I never did it. And then my schedule on top of that, I just wanted to focus. But if I could have like a Health Careers class at Lincoln, I would be more than willing to do that.
Or what about another thought besides that? It's like some schools, like at New Tech, they have the block scheduling and at Watertown is another example. They have block scheduling where you would have, um, your, you know, you'd only have four classes per semester. So you'd have two periods of one class each thing. So you'd have that transportation issue. Is that something kids would be interested in or what, what do you think of that idea? To allow for the transportation to and from?
I like it, but I know at New Tech, the block, they both have block schedules, but it's like a different block schedule. So it's like ever so slightly different. Cause we get out at two thirty and they get out differently. So I'm like, I know for me, CTE was like, I'd have to stay in school for an extra thirty-six minutes. And that was just kinda, yeah.
While you're commuting back to Washington.
For activities as well, yeah.
I don't know, the block scheduling to me, like not me personally, I mean, I think I could do it. Um, but I think some kids are like, oh, if I can get through this fifty minute period, cause I don't like this class, then I'll be on to my next class that I do like. And if you're in a block schedule and you're stuck in there for two hours, we might just not see kids show up.
At least at our school, we kinda like have like one block, like part, split the block in halves, like block one A block. So it's like fifty-two minutes in each class. But we do have some combined courses. So then that helps out too. So it's, you're only in like one class for two hours, if that makes any difference.
Any final thoughts here from our students as we wrap up on just with the, the number of students we have in our elementary? As Dr. Maher has stated multiple times, as they move up through, there's over a thousand students more currently in the elementary in the four grades than we can even have currently in the high schools. Any more thoughts on that of what we should do, uh, in your opinion, with the number of students coming up in our facilities?
In schools?
I would agree.
I think one thing is, um, I think we should do a high school when we can, because that's gonna be the hardest to do, just cause it's the biggest. Um, I think eventually we can always make, not make, but find a land where a smaller building like an elementary school can be made. Um, and I think the longer we put out a high school, the bigger our problems are gonna be. But I think that would, that's where I would go, man.
Absolutely.
Um, I'm curious what you guys think, cause I think most of you went to, um, middle school here and then high school. And so there are other, um, kind of methods or other building designs where you might have a fifth and sixth grade in one building and a seventh and eighth grade in another building. Um, so any feelings on that? Or even I know with people who have more of a junior high and they do a seven, eight, nine. So then you remove the ninth graders from a high school and have them. Or a ninth grade academy. There, there's all sorts of different kind of structures to a high school. So just in general, kind of what are your feelings when you think about that, having been, you know, through all of those stages already? What would you, what would that look like to you or how do you think that would feel?
I like the structure now personally, because I mean, for high school, I like having that freshman like type mentality. Then you work your way up to being the kings and queens of the school. And in middle school, you have that mini version of that where it's like, okay, I'm a baby now, but wait till I'm in eighth grade. So it's like that. When you're a fifth and sixth, it's like, oh, you're either on the top or you're on the bottom and there's no in-between. When, with that break, and if it's ninth grade, it's just ninth grade. And there's no inner mix between where you can like be with someone who's older than you and still feel comfortable versus being so like that kinda thing. So with what we have now, I feel like as far as culture wise is like probably the best option, but.
I agree. Um, I learned a lot as a freshman from seniors and upperclassmen from different people. So having that people who already have their life together, they know what they're doing and it's an easier way to ask for advice. Like, hey, what am I doing here? Cause they already been through this. They know the wheels. They have done it before. I feel like taking that away would eliminate that.
And I think it's kind of almost an established community of like ninth through twelfth graders in high school. You, like Sid Meier said, the freshmen and the, through the seniors, it's kind of a community. And also you get to learn from people older than you, since a lot of times your classes, you may be a freshman with a bunch of juniors. So you definitely get to learn from other students too.
Thank you.
Well, we are at our time, cause we do need to leave Mr. Vick some time to be able to talk about the legislature and bills. Uh, so we thank our students for being here with us today and appreciate your leadership in each of those buildings and your insight as well this afternoon. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
We also have board reports, so we'll just do a few of these today. Uh, talked with Dr. Maher. We won't take any actions, but we'll go through them today on the key bills. Get the, let the board, uh, if they wanna make changes to them, we can do that. And then we'll go through the rest of them on Monday night and then get official action from the board. So I think there's one here that I have flagged that's not key. But, uh, approximately there's ten key bills for us to look at quick. So the first one is on page three. House Bill eleven twenty, that's, uh, provides equal access for homeschool students to participate in High School Activities Association. We, of course, we have that as key. We have it as opposed. The bill would allow homeschool students to, uh, choose what services they receive and what rules they have to follow by effectively exempting them from all academic and non-other team related rules, i.e. passing X number of classes, school attendance on game day, et cetera. Um, my position is the academic eligibility requirement for homeschool students is not very strong. Um, that came up in committee. The bill may also put homeschool students above their public school peers by automatically giving them an open enrollment right to any team or activity in any school they want in the district, potentially moving from school to school depending on the season or the activity. We don't know exactly if that's what's intended by the bill, but it reads, it's kinda iffy on that. So we have that as opposed. The bill, uh, died in committee but was smoked out. It'll be on the floor tomorrow, I think. And it, uh, reminded me today, and it, uh, they got a thirty-eight to thirty vote to calendar it. Since it got smoked out, they had that vote. So that might show you how it's gonna fare in the House. Who, don't know for sure. But anyway, we have that as an opposed. Any questions or on that bill? Okay, Senate, and then another key bill is right below that then, same page. Eleven twenty-eight requires districts to increase their teacher compensation by eighty-five percent. Of the increase in the state aid formula each year, or the state would be reduced by five hundred dollars per teacher. The state aid would be reduced by five hundred dollars per teacher employed in the district. We have that as opposed as well. We think it's, uh, micromanaging of teacher compens, you know. We understand why they put that in when they passed the half cent sales tax and increased statewide by nine point one percent. The, the, the legislature wanted some accountability on that. Um, this would put that accountability in each and every year. Is, uh, schools would have to meet that. Um, we've looked back, we went back to the first year, first full year of the per student formula, which goes back to ninety-eight. And through FY fourteen, the, the average teacher salary increase was two point three percent. State aid increase over that period of time, the average increase was one point nine. There's a myth, I think, in, among some legislators that they give money to schools and schools spend it elsewhere or put it into reserves. And, uh, it hasn't worn out over time. And then in the actual year that the half cent sales tax was increased, state aid went up statewide by an average of nine point one percent. Teacher salaries went up eleven point seven percent. There isn't, it's, uh, fixing a problem that doesn't exist. However, so you say, so then why not, why worry about it? Well, year to year, you might not, you might have contracts that work out where you get bigger increases in one year. You get, uh, uh, smaller increases in another. And then if you have turnover, if you have turnover, you can't, uh, necessarily fit that in. And then there's a committee to possibly let you out of it, but if your excuse is good enough. And then if that committee approves that, then it has to go to a legislative, cause you gotta get it read by two committees. So it's just like, just let, let the process play out. It has played out over going all the way back, you know, twenty years basically. It's played out fine. You don't need to micromanage schools. You guys are elected. Um, local control is important. Legislators say that as well. They don't wanna be told by Washington how to run their affairs. I understand that. And I think that should work for school boards as well. Uh, I'll, I agree. I agree with you. Yeah, it's odd. So, uh, it's some, you know, I don't know. I think some of them think it's, uh, better for schools and I'm just like, oh. Yeah, right. Although all the five hundred, you lose five hundred dollars a teacher. Just, uh, get rid of all your teachers, I guess. Um, anyway, we have that as opposed. So then the next one is page, page eight. Oh, that's, uh, been assigned appropriations committee. That means it'll probably sit there till the last, uh, possible day is what usually happens. So I'm not, so page eight, there's House Bill eleven eighty-nine. It, uh, it's a reaction to that deal in, uh, Tri Valley where, uh, there was seen as trying to lure homeschool students in for a day to count on the, the child or, uh, for the state aid, the fall enrollment day, which is the last Friday in September. It would prohibit providing inducements for attending school and essentially makes it a felony and provides revocation of the offender's certificate for knowingly over reporting student numbers. Seems a little harsh, but I personally don't think that is so horrible. You shouldn't be over, knowingly over report students. You shouldn't be bribing students to come in. Then, uh, it makes the fall enrollment date, the date of the count, a random day in the last two weeks of September. Then, uh, it makes the fall enrollment date, the date of the count, a random day in the last two weeks of September. And you don't know what that day is until October. Um, we think it's, the bill should be amended to get rid of that, make it the last fall, the last Friday in September, which it is now. Moving that day around, you know, we'd start it after Labor Day. That, that'd be in the first two weeks of school sometimes. And you get literally some kids that don't even know school started until they see a bus driving around their neighborhood. And those, those things fluctuate quite a bit in the, in that beginning. So just leave that part alone. And if you want to make, you know, if you want to get rid of the inducements, you want to make it illegal to induce kids to come to your school for a day, that's fine. And if you want to make a harsh penalty for lying about state aid, make it, that's probably fine too. But get rid, I mean, let's not go overboard, which this bill seems to do. It's whoever sign, uh, school, no, it's whoever signs off on that knowingly, knowingly does it. So, uh, yeah, it's not for the school board. Um, you guys okay with that position? Just amend, the position is to amend the bill to get, okay. We're opposed then, yeah. Uh, that's in, assigned to judiciary, it hasn't been acted on yet. Um, page nine, it's dead, but, uh, some bills come back. We found that on the, uh, the homeschool bill. So just to, we hadn't talked about this one yet. The, uh, prohibits schools from compensating labor union representatives negotiators, um, to negotiate. The bill would forbid district employees to receive pay for doing union activities. The bill has died. Um, we have that as opposed. Just wanted to mention it, if you guys want us to change it, just in case the bill comes up in another form. Okay with that? The next one, 1211, another bill that has died. It, uh, requires school district opt-outs to be referred to vote, no others, just school district opt-outs. We had a pose on that. It died in committee. But, uh, if it comes back up, we see that as a key bill to oppose. Yeah, it's weird. Um, I had page 13, I guess, is, uh, next key bill. 1242 has died. That one, uh, that's Jamie's bill, maybe he wants to talk about it, but, uh, yeah, it, uh, just died. Uh, it would allow, allow students in a high school journalism course, the freedom of expression in reporting information. Well, what it does is it allows, doesn't give editorial to the, to the school personnel.
And all places do have editors. And the schools should be no, and publishers, and the schools should be no different in that. As we go through and try to teach the students truly what that will reflect.
You want to do 1256 too? That's another, that's a, same page, 1256, that's Jamie's bill, so I'll let him talk about it.
And that bill, it's, uh, just changing the start of the school age for the children and move it back relatively two years. So instead of between five and six, they had mandatory start age between seven and eight, which means we would have students in high school that would be 18 as sophomores. Um, and at 18 to drop out of school. There's obviously quite a few different, uh, things would come up as potential problems in moving that back two years. So we do oppose that.
Did I read somewhere that it wasn't that you couldn't start your child at five or six, like people traditionally do? But it would be the rule that you had to have started by whatever it is, seven, seven grade. But I guess when I think about that, I think about a kindergarten class, then potentially having a five and a seven-year-old together.
You are correct. So a lot of five and eight-year-olds would then the same kindergarten class or first grade moving through.
Okay, the last key house bill is on page 15. It, uh, it's, I think, it, it's rel, related to that, that prior bill we talked about for the homeschool and activities. And this bill says, if you don't, if a school does not allow homeschool students to participate in, in activities or sports, they can opt out of paying the general fund property tax for schools. Uh, so we have that as opposed. There are lots of taxes we all, there's lots of things we support that we're not allowed to participate in. And I'm sure there'd be a long list of, right, exactly. So, yeah, this bill is also signed appropriation. We have it as opposed and key. I can't imagine it's going to go anywhere, but we still should oppose it. So, next one, anybody have any house bills that, that they saw that they want to talk about before we go on to the Senate? Just because we're crunched for time. Page 19 then is, uh, it's not key, just, we got it amended, so we have it as support now. That, uh, Senate Bill 46, restraint, seclusion, we offered up Kate, Bartel Nowak, offered up a, and, and, uh, offered up an amendment, they put it on, so we're cool with that bill now. We support it as, as amended. Page 20 is a key bill. Um, the, the board has actually seen that one. It's passed Senate four to three. Um, passed Senate Ed, I'm sorry, four to three. We, it wasn't key when we first looked at it. We changed it to key now. Looks like it's got some legs. Um, our position on that, and we oppose it. There are over 90 organizations that are listed as patriotic societies and every one of them could, could demand time at every one of our, our, our schools. And it's just, I mean, they want to, they want kids to learn, um, you know, the three Rs, the four Rs, whatever, reading, writing, rhythm, things of. That what it is. So anyway, we have that as opposed and it's key now. That part is new. Page, uh, everybody good with that? Page 20, oh, we just did that one. Page, uh, 22. It has died. It's, uh, we did have it as opposed. It was key. It's provisions regarding the lawful possession of firearms in certain locations. It would essentially say if you didn't allow. I thought it was if you didn't like what I was saying. You just squelched it. We had this, it's, the bill is dead. Um, it, our, our position on this, you know, the bill was that if you didn't allow firearms, you had to have a metal detector. I mean, we're not allowed to allow firearms, even if we wanted to. So it would be a huge expense to require firearms everywhere. So we have that as a, a pose. Those are the key bills. Oh. Yeah, I wanted to. What was that, 84? I wanted to point that one out. That's right. Yeah, we, we do not show it as it's dead. So that bill, we originally said no position and, uh, thought it over. One, one board member asked us to take a look at it. We, so we, we went back and to oppose it. And it's, uh, the bill that would prevent public entities from entering into a, no, that's not the bill. I'm talking about the wrong one. I'm sorry. Kent, do you know the number on that one? Do you remember? Well, I can just, uh, the bill was, it's passed. It's, it's actually got through both houses. It was, um, that's not the number. Then the bill, I don't remember the number. The bill, though, said that school districts should provide certain information for elections. And it was just school districts. And it wasn't municipalities, counties, any, anything else. Originally, we said, we don't really like the idea, we don't understand what, but, uh, it has passed both houses. Um, we did change it to oppose though. And we plan to have it that way, uh, Monday night.
I'm talking about 84 we didn't vote on, but it says here we approved it.
Oh. Oh, yeah, that's right. I, yeah, I'm sorry. We changed our position on the other one. 84, we had as opposed. We didn't have it approved. We, we, we still show it as not approved by the board. Um, you want to talk about that one? Yeah, that one is still alive. And, uh, it would prevent public entities from entering into a settle agreement, settlement agreement with a third party without providing at least certain elements of what that would, of what the settlement was, including the dollar amount. And you saw our, our position, the administrative position or recommendation is opposed. Confidentiality is a key component to reach a settlement agreement among the parties to a legal dispute. Without this component, settlement options will become less appealing to each of the parties involved in a dispute and therefore increases the likelihood each party expends more resources with litigation.
So originally it was going to be just a summary and they amended it.
I'll let Kate chime in, yeah? So are we, we okay with the opposed? Okay. All right, we still won't act on it, so we won't show it as board acted upon. But we probably won't spend as much time on the, or any time on these Monday night. Yeah, we will skip over these as we go through all the other bills quick Monday night, so we're not here all night Monday night. Thank you. So it passed today. To the House floor? No, it goes to the floor. All right, do you guys want to do reports? Thanks.
Um, we had a calendar, uh, committee meeting and we're still taking some feedback. We had lots and lots of discussion about, um, days off, requests from teachers. Should we have in-service on days that we have, um, you know, a long break afterwards? Because then that prevents teachers from being able to take time on either side of it and take time off for themselves. So, um, Jamie's working on reworking a few options that we talked about and we'll bring that back. We meet again at the end of the month, um, is our next meeting. Um, workforce development, uh, at the chamber. We spent another meeting, um, with Candy Hansen, leading an activity on kind of identifying the key, the key players in the community on workforce development and who's contributing at what levels and trying to come up with a plan, um, for how to move forward with that group. Um, and then I missed Pat. Do you have anything to add? Anything earth-shattering?
No, nothing earth-shattering.